Good evening. Thank you for joining this meeting of Scottsville Town Council. It's the council's regular business meeting for Monday, November 21st, 2022. My name is Matt Lawless. I serve as Scottsville Town Administrator. This evening's meeting is held in compliance with Virginia Open Meeting Laws and the State Freedom of Information Act. We're meeting in person at the town office, 401 Valley Street in Scottsville. The meeting is open to the public and the agenda includes a public comment period. Participation is also welcome remotely, online through the Zoom platform, or by calling in on the phone. Those instructions are posted physically at the town office and online at the town website. If you're viewing the meeting in the future through the town's YouTube channel, thank you very much. The local time here now is six minutes until seven o'clock. We've posted start time for the meeting. We're still assembling our quorum and setting up for the meeting, so I'll mute this line. You can skip ahead on your recording, six minutes, and you'll see us come to order. Thank you.
Hey, Matt. Just seeing if the sound works. This is Dan Grisco.
I'm hearing you loud and clear, Dan.
Thanks, Javi. How you doing?
All right. How are you?
I'm doing all right. Excited to chat with you. Did you have a good day today?
Yeah, yeah, it was nice in the office. Enjoyed the day, busy as always, but I enjoyed it. How'd your day go?
It was okay, just a different pace than I'm used to, so taking it one day at a time.
I think likewise, I could say the same recently also. I hope you do well, Dan.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are you going to deal with the song line, or are you just handling his duties too?
I can do the kind of in-person roll call and things, however, you're able to find out some.
Well, he's a man. All right, well, it is a minute and a half and seven, so we'll get started. We'll ask the town administrator to call the roll.
Mr. Bissette?
You.
Mr. Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Grisco?
Here.
Would you clarify where you are, sir, and why you're not with us?
I am at my house, and I had surgery last week, and I'm recovering.
Thank you very much. Wishing you the best of recovery. Thank you for talking to us online. Mr. Hysen?
Here.
Mr. Hyson?
Here.
Mr. Payne?
Here.
Mr. Mariner Lequon?
Everybody's here in a county force, less stand and have our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
I'd like to lead into the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Every speaks. The consent calendar this evening includes approval of the agenda, approval of past minute meeting minutes, approval from actual October 2022. Anything else to be added to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to have a couple of changes to the agenda, or at least add, we have one thing. We discussed it in our meeting about a motion for Valley Street parking signs. To look at that, and I think the idea was to, all the signs on Valley Street and Main Street be removed, and that we just follow the local state law regarding safe parking. So it's about the signs. And the other one I'd like to amend is number six, where it says, "Six C." And just make that a discussion, rezoning, SUP application, 800 Bird Street, and then we could discuss the, maybe discuss the time and place for the public hearing, and have that locked in there.
I disagree. I'd like to leave it as is.
Well, we'll get to that when we get there. This is just a discussion of it, and I don't think that should be on the agenda. That's really the thing on the agenda should be a discussion of it, and then we make a motion about the when that happened.
We had already agreed to the agenda last week, Council Hyson.
Well, we haven't voted on it. And I think we need to do it in a public session, just like this. We talked some things last week, and in the work session, we can't make decisions, and I from what I understand, we make decisions at the town council meeting, and these are just preliminary decisions.
We're going to vote on holding a public hearing in January on this plant, but we can certainly discuss it before we vote on it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to have the public hearing scheduled for January, then we'll have this be seconded, and then we'll have a discussion. Okay? So I need to have a motion to accept the consent calendar with the additional couple of things that we just spoke of.
I'm going to take that consent calendar with, I'm sorry, additions.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to the public forum. Anybody in the public who would just speak about anything, step forward, state your name, and talk.
I'm Kimberly Schiflett, living in Scottville, but I am speaking about the maintenance of some of the stuff that's going on in town, specifically bushes that need to be bring back and more removed. I don't know the actual address, to be perfectly honest, where Dina lives. Matt, you know her address?
About 10 Valley Street.
About 10 Valley Street. There's also another set of bushes that is encroaching onto the actual sidewalk, and it's further down to the yellow house that's right next to the Dina home parking lot. Even if that's right on Valley Street, I don't know their address, to be perfectly honest. Some of the maintenance as far as the bushes needs to be kept up, as well as enforced. So I would like to see that happen. I've been asking for that since back in August of last year. Matt and I have spoken on several different occasions. Matt, you know Dina about that threat? Yep, about letting her know that this needs to be taken care of, because she has yet to be taken care of. So I would like to see something done about that, and also have a timeline as to when that could be completed. Any of the limbs, as far as on some of the trees that are up and down the street, on either Main Street or Valley Street, to make sure that they're limbed up, specifically so that people don't cook their eyes out. If, I know a lot of people walk dogs. If any of the dogs happen to go to the bathroom in the washbath, and people bend down to go pick it up, and stand back up, some of the lower limbs, and I'm not asking for the trees to be like straight up and down, but just to be limbed up to where you're not going to have a potential issue of somebody poking themselves in the face. Anything else that I would be asking for is just trying to make sure that the education's done to the town, and in a timely manner.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking time to come this evening. We've certainly, those items that you mentioned. Anybody else from the public?
Matthew Holt, I just wanted to point out to the town council that at the last planning board meeting, there was the review of the scan land, and they asked for rezoning, and there's actually a public hearing on Mondays at the sixth, December 6th, the next planning meeting. Right, yeah, and that wasn't, it wasn't. No one told about it at the last week, so I wanted you guys to be aware that there actually is a public hearing, even scan land, is up for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Anybody else? We'll close the public forum if nobody else wishes to speak. We're on to item number four, which is my report, which is not differ a whole lot from the work session report other than last week. There was a meeting between Eddie, Matt, and myself, and what is Gloria's name?
Oh, Gloria Newton.
Gloria Newton. It was just sort of to update us on the, what's going on with the lawsuit between the county and the rescue squad, and she has some good firsthand information that we were able to try to digest, and and we didn't make any plans, or there's no plans for going forward. We just want to see how this thing ends up right now, but she was just bringing us up to speed on where it stands at the moment, so we had a nice meeting, and it was very informative. Mr. Vice Mayor has been a little incapacitated. Mr. Grisco, do you have anything to report as vice mayor?
Mr. Mayor, just thankful for our local opportunities medically. I'm glad for the surgeons at the University of Virginia, and looking forward to recovering over the next month or two, and thankful for your and everybody's support and prayers, so thank you very much.
Well, it's good to have you with us, even if it's on Zoom, and I'm glad everything went well last week, so just keep this, keep us posted if you need anything, and let's take a call. Mr. Bissette, do you have anything to report on events this evening?
We're going to gather that event towards the end of December, and hopefully raise some more money for a potential project, if anyone wants to jump in on that, and the holiday happening is coming up, so I talked to Lou, and we're going to start to organize back and forth.
Good.
Is that, that's all the change, right?
Yes.
Thank you for staying in.
What date is that?
We have the tent Saturday, the tent.
Great.
So, everybody make sure you mark your calendar for the tent, because last year it was really, it was, if the weather cooperates, we're going to have sudden pieces snow. Those poor folks in Buffalo. Now, Mr. Bullock, ARB?
Yeah, ARB reported briefly having a new bit of the Canadian forests fall off on the Dollar General. CLA has been derelict, and not following through on land keeping plan there for several years, and we have, as a board, and really, Matt, and our attorney, to try to hustle up the appropriate line of responsibility. If you can be the right way to express it, or who does the work, we have now articulated that, and we met in our last meeting, we have a representative who's responsible for getting that work done, and seemed eager to get it right, so that was encouraging. The findings are, should not happen right now, the ground is frozen, but we want to, we're getting on it as soon as planting becomes feasible. We're going to keep an eye on that, but I think at this point, we have our legal ducks on the road to pursue court action if they don't follow through this time. So I think now we have a chain of communication and proper legal responsibility for following through on that. We're also getting ready for an April ARB inventory. The door will split up into pairs to survey properties in historic districts, which we do every year, to on condition. For those of you who don't know, we only survey the exterior of property. That's our only issues, the HOD, the Historic Overland District. And the only properties of real concern to us, of course, they're all concerned, but a follow-up immediately are those important conditions, which mean they are unsealed, or they're the structural issue. And so we'll be conducting those surveys over the next few weeks, and for those of us who live in town, we make sure to divide the surveys so that we don't survey our own. Our architect, who serves on the board, will not be involved in the initial survey, but any, they're rated excellent, good, fair, and poor. And so any property that's rated poor or fair, we are going to have our architect to come downtown and do an additional survey to double check our own survey inward, and then I'll report to you all about that likely in March. I think March sounds right, by the time we go back and forth through the John, counties are, so that's my neck.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Anything on beautification?
Did not have a meeting this month. However, we did get some planting done. The planters in front of the museum were deemed unsavable, so they've been replaced and put some nice fall hardy mums out there, in addition to some planters went in front of All-Star, because apparently he never got, never got planters when the initial planters went out, so so it took care of that. I had a meeting with Matt a few weeks ago to discuss the butterfly garden and the parking lot behind, behind the Mason building, and get some ideas where we're going to move forward with those, and yep, that's where we stand right now.
And a couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with the number of people from, associated with James River Boys and Girls Club.
Yes.
And they are more than excited about the town asking the kids over there to help with projects, like clean up, or you know, it's kind of hard to do when we have a cleanup on Saturday, because you're not there on Saturday, but if you've got some kind of project going during the week, get hold of Jelani over there, and line them up.
Excellent.
They're ready to help.
They might have some fun with the power washers, because that's going to be the next project, power washing benches.
Okay, well, thank you, Meredith. Mr. Hyson, you have someone who's going to speak this evening, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
I said, you have somebody who's going to speak.
Yeah, but let me, let me start.
Oh, so Government Services.
All right, Government Services. And I'll try to be brief. We've been quite busy with trying to improve governments, governance. We had four meetings since the last town council meeting, so some of these are ongoing, some of these are new. We're still working on town maintenance, having a regular weekly routine and oversight for taking care of the streets, parks, buildings, like Kimberly mentioned, and you know, this is a long-term issue, and Kevin's been spearheading this. The website, we're still working on that, ways of improving it to be, help it be more informative and interactive, particularly current announcements and events calendar, so the website's another long-term project. One thing we did complete is a volunteer flyer and email address for, and it's posted around town to recruit citizens on various committees in the town, so if anybody wants to be on the committee, look at the poster or email, use that email. We're looking at the DMV reviewing profitability and its communication with the public. We started looking at the idea of an impact analysis, which is looking at estimates of town costs and doing the numbers and other impacts for any development project, and we're suggesting doing an impact analysis of different categories for putting a comprehensive plan. A future project we're looking at is rules of procedure for the town council and the town charter. The town charter is, probably needs revision and editing. The last one I looked at, or the one I have, is from 1998, so it's a little bit outdated. Town employees, we're recommending having goal setting as part of the performance review for all town employees, just to make sure they're doing what we want them to do, or they're doing their job. We started looking at grant review, and we have the grants list on the table, if anybody wants to grab them, of information about the town grants, and looking at procedures for pursuing grants and commuting with the, communicating with the public about grants. So there's several grants that are old, and some are new, and some are ongoing, so we're looking at the grants and trying to make sure that the public knows about that, and that's done in the right way. And the last thing is the town budget review, and Matthew, are you going to, Matthew, are you going to address that? The budget?
We can talk generally about it.
Okay, okay, but anyways, the budget is something that's beyond my scope, but there is concern about the making sure we have enough in the caucus, because we live in high with, with a lot of the you know, incentives from the government, and make sure that we're living within our means.
Any questions, Mr. Hyson?
But?
I said, I'll ask if anybody had any questions.
Did you, I'm sorry. On our committee, if you can speak.
Yeah, this is Kevin, we're going the main, I sent, I gave that during the works session in the last time. I didn't know if you had a chance to review it, if anybody had any questions, and I'm just trying to get the next sort of part of what I need to do in, as far as direction, and so what typically happens as far as what's the process?
Well, that's a great question. Well, I guess this becomes a question, who sort of responsible for making the next? My sort, so Matt is supervisor of landscaping in our maintenance department, so my thought was that the feedback would go to Matt, right, and so he had our notes about the landscaping plan, like timing and such. And then that would be turned into this like goal setting document, right? So this would become part of how our maintenance department is reviewed. So I think that document needs to be eventually turned into like the seasonal or weekly checklist for checking up on maintenance work. I mean, but I'm all, I'm speaking, that's my understanding, that's not like the right.
Well, yeah, what I'd like to do too is, is like, since it's the winter now and spring, and we, the cutting season's over, that we and everybody just come up with suggestions of what needs to be done during the next few, maybe not the regular schedule needs to be done the next few months, you know, painting the lines for the parking, certain, the bushes, like she mentioned, you know, cleaning the streets, the butterfly guard, maybe come up a list of things you're not going to be doing in the summer as much, but those kind of things, you know, that need to be completed during the winter, that we can be completed in the winter. That's, that's mine, I think, but maybe the government service can come up with some of those ideas, and everybody can pitch in and get a list of these things, to-do list.
This is also a slower time of year, but we'll afford time, I think, to create that running plan, too.
Yeah.
Because some of the things you mentioned are on that plan, but like, again, like, we check out or whatever.
Some of them might be extra, and it actually might need money to do so, you know, special, special projects. So I noticed the, the drinking fountain's been fixed somewhat at the Canal Basin Square, but it leaks, but at least it works. So that needs, and, but I think everybody needs to look at the town and see what needs to be done, that can be done during this.
Okay, this is November. Yeah, all right, so what, maybe try like January, the work session in January, come back with something as far as based on what you all are saying, and then try to give something, and then we have January and February to get it straight before it starts happening.
Well, I guess also, this is a question for that, so what would be a reasonable timeline for having this kind of like supervisory in place, based on feedback from government services, which we council is not far.
Let's, you and I meet up once more in the next month, and I think we can nail down the specific goals, and if that evaluation sheet needs to be updated, we can lock that down. I have a performance evaluation form to use on it, and we can get the improvement plan later with that.
Could, could we have a, Kevin, or I'm not sure if y'all can hear me, but my question is, since we're preparing for 2023, and Matt or Mr. Mayor and council, is it worth thinking about, I don't know, a start date of February 1st, or March 1st, or whatever it is, that that's when this is implemented? So I think what Kevin did is wonderful, Zach's follow-up's been good, but that we have a very specific start date that kicks in, so it's ready for the early spring.
Yeah, that sounds good, and probably since we've got your stuff at the work session, we've got it now to work on. Matt's going to meet with you, we've got December, January, we're going to talk about implementing this February 1st, or something like that.
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Mr. Payne, did you have anything to add to government services in respect to the public safety, or anything like that?
No, not public safety. I know that Chief Jenkins was out of town for portions last week, so first week in a long time, I didn't get to talk with him, but had something come up, I'm sure you would. But uh had something come up, I'm sure you would call me, I'd like to add, um, I uh I met with uh. Ms. Schifler and looked at the the bushes across the street, and and I'm in agreement, they are they are. Over onto the sidewalk, they are in construction and they're unsightly. And something does need to be done, on the other end of town, um, next to the images beauty. There are bushes hanging over into the what could be a parking area, um, certainly it's part of the road. And uh the bushes are so high that, uh, well, the other day, the Route six slash twenty. Ten-foot signs were obstructed, um, and uh. Mr. Lawless was out of town, so I just called V-Doc on Veterans Day, I think he was. And uh just told him about it, and there is a a work ticket pending for that. I did not talk to the property owners because V-Doc felt like that was on their right away responsibility, and I hope they'll get to it pretty soon.
Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Grisco, do you have anything to add to your report from last week on uh planning commission?
Uh, the only thing I was gonna say on a personal note when I presented it would be. I just, we talked about before, just the idea that. Uh, if there's a way, I I will, I'll be removed probably for the next month related to doing much related to the town, so. I did mention in the report and you mentioned the idea that we would be able to do it in January, and I mean, I. Unfortunately, in my medical situation, I I regret that I'm gonna be kind of low-key for probably through Christmas.
Okay, we'll certainly keep that in mind. Anything else for any committees? Okay, we'll move on to item number, number six. Now Rock County broadband accessibility and affordability office. Yeah, so.
I was back in uh, yeah, having fun, yeah, um. This guy's done an outstanding job uh working on a tool that allows uh. Better collecting, collecting data uh on all utilities, but particularly telecommunications, so. That's from us, yeah, there's a lot of uh power line issues and. Telecommunication line issues that are running on throughout the county, and because of the work uh Jack Maxwell has done. We have a tool that we're hoping to tie up here around Scottsville before putting it out in front of the entire county. If we go to the next slide, I'll just briefly do this, and uh we only have five slots, so. Um, what we wanna do is collect field data safely, whether that's at a person's home or along the roadways. You know, on a trail, anywhere where there may be telecommunications lines or utility lines. Power lines, and it doesn't matter which utility it is, whether it's bright speed or Nelson Cable. Um, or any of the power utilities, Appalachian Power, C-Deck. We want that to be reported as soon as someone recognizes that it's stand on our our limb is on a a power line or something like that.
You get the call number.
Yeah, so, yeah, um, Jack has gone through this, a lot of work, especially here in in Scottsville to. To document, and we've never had this, so we've never known who's pulled along for the, you know, right, so it's like. Somebody has to do it, so we're really anxious to like see if this is going to work throughout the rest of the county. Um, once the, once the issue is reported, our broadband office, we're sort of taking on additional roles, not just telecom, but. Also some of the electricity and those types of things, um, we'll report them. So you can see, there's a lot of things that could happen out there, um, you know, there's construction debris, there's cables on the ground. There's damaged telephone and power utility pole uh poles out there. And we're finding vacated equipment, so sometimes when a line's no longer in use, instead of coming out and getting it, they'll just leave it there. Um, and then brass goes around it, and somebody mows around it, and all of a sudden they need new blade, that kind of stuff. We can, we can uh avoid that, but we also want the public to help us report, obviously, for trending data. You know, we see a lot of uh telepathy issues or internet access issues in this specific area. Um, the best way to show that to the telephone providers is, you know, by by sort of the trendy data mapping. I'm saying we've got a blogger that's having specific problems and they need to go in and fix them. Uh, so that's essentially the type of issues that I think. We wanna make sure that anybody who goes out and uses the tool that Jack's developed, uh, they they take care when they do so, I mean, you know. They can't be walking down the little road taking photos of things, they can't. Like, if you were to go in and touch that pedestal, like green pedestal that's laying on the ground there. Um, I think that might be a bright speed, now bright speed uh pedestal, they could they could charge you with trespassing. So we just have to make sure people are aware, it's great to get a photo, but you can't go out and pick it up and move it around, that kind of thing, um. So we really want people to be careful when they're out there taking uh images of damaged equipment. Um, just when the tree down the choir, right, yeah, yeah, definitely, don't don't go near electric.
So this idea came out from, you remember, if you guys remember this mega burst we had down here a couple of summers ago. We had, I guess, essentially galore happening, so basically this tool will be something that will be easier. And quicker to get access compared to what happened back here in July of twenty twenty-one, when we had, I guess, a thousand people out.
Yeah.
Uh, ha- half those towns got to the hat, cable for seven months. And this tool will be easier to get that information to, and I'm kind of, they can set it out to, I guess, next person up.
Yeah, we have a a simple point of contact who will escalate these types of issues going forward, so definitely making headway. I think there's one more slide, yeah, the next step is we just, we're asking for your assistance, you know, getting out to all of your contacts and saying, hey. What would Jack will um socialize, it's called socializing the tool, getting more people to use it. Um, the broadband office, Jason and Whitehead's now will make sure that the utility companies, that we have contacts and each of the utility companies. And we'll let them know that we're collecting the data, right now we just email them, so we don't, you know, have to go back from that, so this this will make it a lot easier. Help us skip a step that we're currently uh, you know, waiting to do involved, this way we'll have them as they happen, which will.
I've been completed, I guess, tired from Bloom two fifty, from Penta all the way down to Scottsville's been completed so far. Then I've been finding some pedestals.
Yeah, the broken pedestals.
Broken pedestals down here, and I guess that's something if this in town, then you can try and get them to. Yeah, fix so far, it's been down uh three weeks.
Yeah.
Three weeks so far in these stuff, I guess, so we're gonna make sure we can document this quicker.
Yeah, so the big concern of all that is that water damage, stuff will get in and start breaking the lines. Um, so we wanted to report back next quarter, you know, some interesting market meeting, just letting you know how it goes, and then at that point. So let's try to move it to county mapping, so we'll have a much bigger mapping um server to to serve out all the data. We don't wanna overwhelm what Jack's already done on on this individual mapping server, so we're we're gonna take it. Kind of as a limited pilot right now, we think it's gonna work really well, so we appreciate you all so.
We're against, we're asking a notification of one person over the course of.
Yeah, maybe you're right.
Can you, pardon me, can you tell me the um what I guess, so I can show it? As locked, right now. Cause uh, cause the personal information, we didn't wanna release that to the public. Okay, basically, basically this map right there is looking at, you type in your address is through RGIS. And basically, what you can do is type in your address and click, you fill out the form to the left. And this, make sure you stick, you follow your safety procedures, so you don't trespass and aggressive. Then when you get to the bottom, make sure you put your contact information for line to somebody uh from a bus speed or a camera angle. And report that, I'm sorry, and then, thanks for the meeting. Any questions?
No, just a comment or few that uh it sounds like a really good program that you've come up with, and hopefully it'll have more pull than some of us. Because a few years ago, big old tree just north of the garage, right up to go to my house, and down across the lines, and V-Dot said. Not ours, and the power company said, we can't do anything until the poles lines are over. So maybe you'll have a little more hope.
Yeah, yeah, I hope so. Yeah, they're not unsightly or dangerous.
So when people access the map and they have access to this, this is what will show up on the map, so I made all the icons so far. That's my entire road and all pedestals, actually, which is called phone boxes, but they actually do with the actual correct term is pedestals. So that's all marked along on my section of Amher County, they have finished all of Valley Street, and so have people not even have that folks. So we have to figure something out about that, so next one.
We appreciate it, just keep us in the loop, so we'll know what you need and we can help, help.
We're not, yeah. Mr. Culp, does it help your work if the council endorses or commands this project in any way?
I think so, I think it would be a valued response, I mean, once Jack adds it up and running and open for the public. You know, something that comes out of the town council that, you know, encourages the citizens of Scottsville to utilize the system. It would be well worth.
Be easier than me, keep posting every, when there's bad weather, I've been posting it before, but I haven't seen anybody. Lastly, but one person used it the other night, um, I guess we got that fixed, so basically, there's only one person so far has been submitting. Images, not as many, the other stuff I've seen, I don't know.
Hmm, right.
So this will be a lot quicker compared in twenty twenty-one, when we had a. Issue was price being significantly threatened, so hopefully this will be more easier and efficient and have people complain.
Uh, yeah, not the same, right, you gotta remove a lot of that, yeah.
Our goal is to make sure everything's all documented, so we have proof that we can use it for in case we have an issue with them like we did twenty twenty-one. And how slowly they are, you can have the documentation, but as the scene state to make sure, if you do also got documentation. If they don't do their act.
Thank you again, just keep us go in the loop, like I say, and we're here to help. Alright, I know we went over the two fifty uh. Commission thing, I had a work session, but Matt, you wanna uh just refresh our memories?
Gladly, um, but um, I think um, important indication, our visitor center director can do that more effectively than I can. She she alerted me to the project in the first place, and I I don't think she's appeared before this body before, it's a good chance to get interviews.
Um, good, good evening, Town Council, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak to you all about this um this evening. Uh, we're really e- excited for the opportunity of um celebrating the United States. Two hundred and fiftieth birthday with the rest of the Commonwealth of Virginia, uh, the um. Proclamation that's in front of you this evening is an opportunity for us to get access to grant funding in order to recognize. Uh, Scottsville and hopefully eventually Charlottesville and Albemarle County's unique history and connection. To um the the birth of our country and the stories that haven't been told to date. So this uh will give us the opportunity to gather a group of historians and other history enthusiasts um leading up. To the two fiftieth, um, that will likely have a celebration at Monticello and other community events, depending on what this committee is able to plan and fund. Do you all have any questions for me?
What is the obligation from the town to play for this?
Um, just the passing of the proclamation.
So if we wanted to do something ourselves, uh, we could do that down here and get some support from you, is that, is that the idea?
Yes, so I'm I'm hoping that we work as a larger community with Scottsville, Charlottesville and Albemarle County. Um, but that doesn't mean that we would only do one thing in one centralized location. We would do things where it made sense to have um recognition take place. Um, I know that Scottsville has a a unique story and a different story than the rest of Albemarle County, and. Uh, I think that would definitely, definitely be something to take into consideration when we're trying to recognize this um, the celebration.
Some of us were here, but some of us here for here for the two hundred twenty-fifth anniversary, and they had some big festivities down here, they had a play. We actually had a a five K run at that for that, so that might be something we could do again, I know the root.
Absolutely, that sounds great.
Okay, well, you're, appreciate your time this evening, and um you're certainly welcome to hang around for a few minutes. So because this is the next thing on the agenda, obviously, and we're going to uh now. A powerful motion regarding this Virginia America two hundred and fifty commission.
Alright, thanks.
Anybody wish motion for or against?
I move that we support the rev- resolution of the town council, the town of Scottsville. Related to the uh Virginia America two fifty commission.
Second, it's been seconded, move the second, any further discussion?
At this time, assuming we'll get a um timeline for, I'm just curious of what the timeline is for building a committee and, you know. Pulling in community partners for them, making more like a DM, um, and any other residents who have a particular vet instruction can pick a one.
Yeah, I know the big day, uh, July fourth, twenty twenty-six is still a ways off, so I was a little surprised, but also pleased. That the state is working this far in advance, um, this vacation, do you know what's next?
Uh, it it's my marching orders to get all of the proclamations passed before we can officially get the committee together. Um, once all three of them have passed and you all are are the leaders in this, um, you all are starting this process for our community. Um, then I will call the committee together, we'll determine next steps um and and likely, you know. Specific moments in history that we wanna recognize through this process. So having um ample Scottsville representation will be important, and I know that Mr. Lawless has already volunteered himself. Um, to be a part of this committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? And I will ask the town administrator to call for the vote.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Besset, uh, Mr. Bullock?
Yeah.
Mr. Grisco?
Yes.
Signs?
Yes.
Mr. Hyson?
I.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Watching, very soon.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate you joining us this evening.
Thank you.
You wanna talk about Valley Street signs first?
Sure, uh.
Let's get that out of the way.
Well, I think the the the, I think it, I brought this up because I do think it's uh. Should be really open to the public about the fact that uh, the uh, we're taking down the signs and we don't need them and they can't be enforced. Uh, but I I like to see, see them got taken down on on maybe both street, uh, Valley and May. Uh, there are a few signs on other parts of this area, which probably could come down too, but uh. But I I'm mainly concerned about making it consistent in those those two areas to uh since, just to have. I don't, I don't like the idea of a lot of signs on the street, especially if they can't be forced in there, uh, they don't really serve a purpose, though. Um, but anyway, that's that, that was my idea about that.
Any questions?
No, I mean, it makes sense, it's helpful to hear, uh, you know, I know we have part of issues on Valley Street, um, in terms of, you know. Uh, access to shops and all of those sorts of things, and I think um, since the two hours is unenforceable, they can't mark tires. That they used to be able to do, um, you know, I I appreciate the need for consistency. And if you can't do that consistently, then you need to, yeah, do away with it. Um, I know they're out there looking at parking, you know, spreading it or parking illegally in the yellow zones or whatever it is, and I think. Um, being consistent about that would be helpful, um, so, I think this is, I think the better way to go. Until that option comes on our way.
Yeah, and it also, it's it's more, it's more fair, cause the what, where the signs are, it looks like. Those are the businesses, you can't have two hours, but everybody else, you can, so it's, I think that makes it a little more sensible, I think.
Yeah, so I think they should come down wherever they're at, yeah, there's no, there's no point in having nothing. But I think it's also worth noting too, that part of the law, we will follow two faults, you know, like cars, the need to move and park the car definitely. Yeah, and our police will be looking, so, important to know.
So did I read the email right earlier that we don't actually have to vote on this?
We can, we can do it administratively, if you'd like to preserve it for the record, um, a motion to instruct staff certainly is in order. Um, but I've taken the administrative guidance as well.
I think vote, just keep it now.
Someone would like to make a motion, now drop it.
I moved.
Good question.
Yeah.
But when you mean it definitely is that, are you talking about like multiple days, are you talking about the long term throughout? But when you mean it definitely is that, are you talking about like multiple days? Are you talking about the long term throughout one day?
Oh, I mean, like a park car. I can't remember what uh, what that is, so it's a lot, it's a long time, it's more than a day, I think.
Think he said three days?
And I think we should also improve our signage again, pointing so like public life online. Um, you know, the old. We have space, and so I think the more we can promote that and guide people there, the better. And that lies often empty. And it's very usable space in town.
And have those parking, those parking notifications where people can park in time, town, because there's a lot of parking in town, you know where it is. But a lot of people don't know that.
I I agree, I I don't think this pie is informative.
Correct. And public parking, that's I just said, public parking, the public can park here all the time.
Actually, that however, encouraging purchase. To to literally not park on the street because someone will plot there, they're all.
And that might be something to communicate to the chamber too, you know, this is also like, you know, because we don't.
But we can't.
I think, I think it'd be good if the the chamber had a conversation about sort of, you know. Okay, we're all trying to make money down here, we're all trying to run our businesses, and this is the way that we can all help each other out, you know, in the day to day. I thank you for that, I think that's so. That's why I think we should be communicating in those channels too.
So back to the um, anybody wish to make a motion on this?
I move. That we uh asked administration to have the two hour parking signs removed.
Is there any further discussion on that one? Mr. Lawless?
Mr. Grisco?
Yes.
The signs?
Yes.
Mr. Heisen? Mr. Payne?
I still like Mr. Payne's idea of compact car.
Yeah, that would be a same. That might be a possibility. I didn't bring my phone, but I've got a picture. Especially right there.
Again, it's not enforced, you're not gonna be able to enforce it, but unless the chief happens to, or somebody, one of our officers happens by and says. Hey, that's not a complex.
You know, the other thing I I was thinking about, because Bird Street is such a problem. Um, I've seen these, we have these uh, these mirrors and you have a mirror across the street and you can see them, people coming, which way are they, this might be a possibility.
Yeah, this time of year with the sun. So that uh, we're gonna run the two hour parking signs. And I will speak at the next uh Chamber of War meeting about this. If we can't get some kind of notice out to all the businesses. Just need to be good neighbors, people, and do good news. Uh, okay. I am called for public hearing on January seventeenth, as we said at the work session.
Sir. Man, I love to be four men. We've called them at item sixty. Was that, that was revised?
It was not revised.
It was not revised.
No, we will instead.
Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to put a motion on the floor for a public hearing about the rezoning. And special useful permit for eight hundred Bird Street, which is a tower refitting as an apartment building. I'd like for this meeting to be held December twelfth, seven P M. Have a special meeting with Town Council, that is my motion.
I do remove Mr. Payne for a second. I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
I'm gonna chime in again and just say, one of the things that we had talked about last meeting uh. Level with the council was that we were. Busy with what was happening at Christmas time on a personal level. I have asked the Town Council if we could have that meeting in December. I feel. Concerned that there's a movement to disregard. Why is public discourse? And if we do that, it's, I mean, it's fine, I I the the councillors can vote as they want to vote, but. I have already stated, I will basically mostly be removed, which would strange. Position for me since I'm the representative on the planning commission, so if that's the intention of the council to remove me. From the conversation, the meeting on the twelfth would sufficiently do that.
Well, I, I think you're doing pretty well on on Zoom, so you could still do that, but my concern is that we have a special uh. Special meeting for that that part, that shouldn't be part of the Town Council, I think that that kind of takes away from it if you have a. So, you know, I wouldn't want it in December, with whatever our meeting is in December. Uh, because I think that's, that would be confusing to have other business and then, you know, uh, a public hearing. And the other thing, it's, it's close, it's uh far, far enough enough away from Christmas for me to do it, and and it's a current thing that's uh. On everybody's mind, I I'd like to not have that over our shoulders, that's because I think I'd enjoy Christmas more than I know that. We don't have this, you know, and all these people are gonna be coming here for that, get it, get it, I just want to get it done.
Okay, well, that's the night of our work session, so can we have a public hearing and our work session on Sunday evening?
Yes. Okay, uh, we can adjust that agenda.
Well, we could have a different work session too.
So, uh, what I think I'm getting here is that we have a, have a public hearing. And then we will decide. When we're gonna vote on this. We're not gonna do it both, we're not gonna have a public hearing and vote on it the same night. Because that's not what we talked about last week, we talked about doing it in January, so everybody have time to get their act together.
Yeah, I think the January plan is is the right plan, not, I think this is a half-baked plan that's being put in front of us right now.
If you can, if you convene a public hearing, the public hearing is the only thing that's required before a decision is made. So if you call the public hearing, hold the hearing, and then are convening on the meeting, a motion to act on the item would be in order.
I I would again, would say, I think that's a half-baked idea, the councillors can certainly do. Uh, you know, we we will, we will vote on this momentarily since the the motion is in front of us, but seems again. There's an intention on this council to have poor public policy that was already. An idea of last month, trying to cut it short before the the councils, we talked last week, was that we would. Look at this, give it time to go into January, again, I have no pretensions to know which way it will go, but. Seems as though there's an inconsistency, some people tell us we're taking too much time, other people are telling us we're going too fast. We simply want to make good public policy and I think good public policy is January.
Yeah, I would say um. Me, if we want to move the. I mean, my preference would be for January because in part because of Dan, to be our person, but also because um Jim Bullen would be able to also attend. And I feel like it's just good practice to have our attorney present during any public hearing, especially one of significant weight. Because I do get the equal questions that we are not experts about in here, and so it's good to have him present. Um, to clarify information, so that would be my preference for January. This body have also not really fleshed through the on our side, we have our report of planning. But we have not yet discussed it at the council. And so my my hope was that we would be able to talk through the planning commission's report. Um, at our work session, so that we would have time to discuss. Um, then have a public hearing. And then vote, and so my thought, if you, if you want to make a motion, if you want it, if you felt like we must do vote in December. The twentieth is on, because we've got a, we've got a public meeting then. I don't, I, you know, we're, you know, moving, now people are talking about accepting the flexibility of meetings, I mean, the change in schedule, you know, that makes it unacceptable. So, now, I would say, keep our December scheduled and then have a public hearing in December, if you wanted to do a seven days. Um, otherwise, I'm I'm capable for January um, for the three, three, six days.
How long is Jim out for? How long is Jim out for?
Um, he's, he's coherent now, um, I'm not sure when he'll be able to travel, but he couldn't um, join this last.
But he can, he can soon.
Yes, you would have his um, he would have his input for technical questions starting now and could join the work session. Could join any special meeting in December.
Okay. So that, I mean, that takes that concern away, I mean, if he, if he'll be on the meeting, I assume.
Well, I I just sort of feel like uh, Mr. Bullock here, and. I've talked to the developers, they're, they don't have a problem in January, but we as a group here. Haven't really gotten down into it with the planning commission report and really hashed it out among ourselves. Which will be a good thing to do. At some point in time.
I think we could do that at the December. Work session, my, my concern is the way. It's being portrayed in, I mean, the newspapers are already saying like, acting as if this has been approved. Because planning commission has said it was, and speaking to people like a veins and everything. There is a. Idea in Scottsville that this has been approved. And I think the longer.
Well, it hasn't.
No, 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 of course, but I think the longer. People live with that. Thought. You you know, and as as people mention it to me, I tell them that it hasn't been, you know, that it's passed, passed planning commission and that's it. Uh, right before I came here, actually, my last customer, Baines, was asking about the meeting tonight and thought, you know, he was like, oh, it wasn't approved. The longer we wait to call a public. Meeting. The less likely. We are to get, I'm not wording it correctly, I think the sooner the better. And I think we could hash it out at December's work session.
If, if we're gonna have. The public hearing in December, we need to have it on the night of the nineteenth, not on the twelfth.
Let me remind council that I have a motion on the floor for a public hearing about the rezoning, special useful permit for eight hundred Bird Street. I'd like for it to be held December twelfth at seven P M.
And so, so go back to what councillor Payne just said, I think.
Any more just discussion, I think uh, I think we could, um, I mean, I'd be okay with having a a special meeting. Just to discuss this like after Thanksgiving, or even of that day, if there is, but you know, I listened to the, I listened to the public hearing and I watched some of it and. I'm hoping, I mean, I'm not sure if we're gonna get whole much, a lot, much, much more at a, at our public hearing. That's new, because I think everybody brought up all the pros and cons for it, so. And I'm hoping those people, same people aren't gonna be talking because we know what they feel, you know, um, so if there's some new people, I think we could get the word out that they come and. And maybe, I don't know if we could limit it to 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 new people wanting to talk, but, I mean, sometimes those meetings go on two or three hours and it's. You know, I, it'd be nice to uh, you know, bring up any new issues that haven't been addressed, but I think everybody's looked at a lot of it, anyway.
Mr. Payne, could I ask you to specify the time, do you want seven o'clock normal or anything?
December twelfth at seven P M.
Okay, thank you. Um, would you like to call the question on your motion?
Any more discussion on Mr. Payne's motion? To have a special here, a public hearing on December twelfth. Our work session night at seven P M. That is the motion, that's been seconded.
I didn't, I didn't say anything about a work session like Mr. Mayor, but a work session can be held. Yeah, before or after? Before it should.
December twelfth.
Or or the day before.
So, Mr. Lawless?
Uh, Mr. Bassett? Yes. No. Mr. Grisco?
No.
The signs?
Yes.
Mr. Heisen?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Motion carries fourteen now.
Yeah, so January, I mean, December twelfth. Seven P M. It would be good if we can, like Mr. Payne said, schedule something, or like Mr. Heisen said, schedule something after.
Yeah, we.
Between the uh, let's just say. The last weekend, November and the first, in the, at the meeting on the twelfth of December, sometime in that two week period, get together. So everybody check your calendars and we'll uh, we'll go from there. Okay?
And this, now this won't take the place of the regular council meeting.
No, 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 no. This is a special meeting, it's newly advertised, and we still have our council meeting on the night. Okay. All right, uh, staff reports.
Couple of routine progress items and a couple of special items to report council. We are on a a long cycle of um accreditation for our flood control system. In addition to the um annual inspections from the Corps of Engineers, there's an eight-year cycle for a more complete accreditation. Uh, my commendations and thanks to Mr. Carr for, among other things, keeping exacting maintenance logs and records of all the operations. Big sheets with to the minute every exercise and operation of our levee and pump system for the past eight years. So when the Corps of Engineers calls for those, it's to an engineer or um. A firefighter's standards of responding to the minute and documenting exactly what they have. Uh, that our system be well maintained and fully certified, and it's not difficult to pull together the accreditation reports. To the Corps of Engineers standards and get us reaccredited as a satisfactory flood control system. I truly appreciate the tremendous volunteer efforts, day and night, of our volunteer team and Mr. Carr. As our low-paid flood control superintendent, making this work, uh, because I don't know how it would be done without all of that volunteer effort. Um, it's impressive and it's much appreciated by the Corps of Engineers, um, they um. They remarked remarkably much lower rate when they come and visit compared to North of Richmond and Scottsville. Are their inspection bands, um, and we're doing what we need to do. Uh, we had in earlier reports from government services, the prep for uh budget process. Um, I'll, I'll be glad to work with you on that, this is about the time of year to begin thinking about economic activity in the coming year. What we think the town's revenue and expenses are going to do, how our businesses are faring, how inflation is treating the town's own costs. And most importantly, what council's goals are for the new year, where do you want to do more or less? Invest more money, try to find efficiencies, what are your project goals for the coming year? Uh, I can do some high-level economic research and try to talk about our basic costs, you know, the price of gas, the price of electricity. What needs to happen on lanes to be competitive, but the real questions are what is important to you and what do you want to see done in the next year? And as we gather those project ideas, we can budget accordingly, and I can have those conversations with all of our staff about what they need to deliver the results that you want. Uh, so we'll have a work session time between now and a budget recommendation presented in March to figure that out. This is a good time to begin getting the numbers together. I had um, two days out of the office last week for the governor's housing conference in Arlington. Um, I've been to that conference several times in the past and found it an excellent opportunity to learn about grants and correspond with our funding agencies. Uh, we, we've gotten some money that way, and I learned about some new programs just coming online and the policy design at this one recent conference. Helpful to hear, uh, and also to learn about the state of zoning updates, comprehensive planning, uh, permit review. All of the items that are before us now, that kind of conference is a good opportunity to learn those best practices, um, so I'll be happy to share more of that at work section as I, as I pull the details together. That, those are the highlights of the past month, I think, happy to answer any other questions about staff.
The other one, we've talked about it, our government service, and it's really crucial that we really look at uh, see if it's worth keeping this D M V. Um, and see if long-range, if it's uh, we're gonna, you know, it's gonna be liable, because it's, from what we originally saw that. It's not doing very well and it's, we're losing money and if, you know, I, we've got to figure out how long we want to do that, because it's significant amount of money to lose, so. That, you know, get the date on that, that would be good.
Indeed, that's our question to ask.
I think it's a two-year turnaround expected, right?
How long has it been?
A year and a half, no, a little bit. A year and a half, no, a little bit more here.
It's August last year, I think it opened.
Good, anything else from anybody?
Matt, could you tell us about the recent tree removal? I think we lost three trees on the sidewalk.
Six, six cherry trees, they had fungal damage on their trunks, so the trunk was kind of decayed on one side. One of them was blossoming last week, which is not a healthy behavior for cherry trees. It was time for them to go. And this, this is not such a bad time to replant a larger new tree. You don't want to try to plant flowers right now, but the larger trees can can go in this time of year and put down some new roots over the winter. So look for those from our native species list, some trees that will survive. Bush cherries going in during street skate, fifteen years is not a bad run for a street tree. It's a hard life in a four by eight concrete pit and those cherries have to go.
I'll find out one day.
We're gonna find out, I mean, we're gonna plant different trees or the same trees.
Yes, not, not cherries. They, they're pretty, but they have a really hard time in that kind of location. So we've got some harder species that are more likely to live longer.
And do we have money in the budget for this kind of stuff?
Okay, so as far as the trees, dogwood or black locusts, it's thornless black locusts. And I'm sure that those places towards. No, it's not, you actually consider other side, but places towards my business. The issue with it was look like meteor damage from when it was younger and so it took off part of the bark down on the bottom. So what I'm going to be careful with is if there's any bleeding done. And any of the, I guess you'd call it the tree areas and the mulch base is not to get close because of that bark does get taken off the bottom end of it. It does not allow the correct nutrients to give up the straw.
Well said, I'm glad to have the helpful remarks on all of this.
You think we have to lose more trees as, as the ones in the year go by?
There's an attrition and and as they get bigger, the removal of them becomes more expensive. Charlottesville's got a difficult debate over removal of some big fifty year old trees and that, that'll be expensive. Yes, those, those were the ones that were in the worst shape, but this will continue as the trees can planted fifteen and twenty years ago, get on in years. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, council, thank you, public, it's time to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a nice Thanksgiving.